Great, well, good evening. My name is Doug Ma. I will be your moderator this evening for this Olympia City Council Candidates Forum. First of all, we want to thank TCTV for being here and recording this forum for us. And I think to start us off, I would like to welcome Jim from OBI -- from OBI. I'm sorry. I'm just kind of messing this all up because I know that we're being filmed. So we'll start all over. My name's Doug Ma, here to moderate the Olympia City Council Candidates Forum on behalf of the West Olympia Business Association and the Chamber of Commerce. And Jim Parsons would like to say a few words on behalf of the West Olympia Business Association.
I'm used to seeing you nervous.
My name's Jim Randall. I'm the president of the West Olympia Business Association. Thank you all for coming tonight. We're very excited about this forum. We've done this in combination with either ODA or the Chamber now for, I think this is our fourth forum. It's always a great event. We are all fortunate enough to live in a town that's small enough where we can really have an opportunity to meet all the candidates and talk to them all personally and get to see what kind of people there and what kind of candidates there and make really a great choice. Based on actual information, a lot of people don't get that opportunity. So this is your time. Pay close attention. This is a very important race. We have good candidates, we have good decisions to make, and I hope this will help you make them. So thank you all for coming.
I think Jim Parsons is a really influential TV actor or something like that. So next up, David Chafford from the Chamber of Commerce, please.
Thank you, Doug, for correctly pronouncing my name. We'll have fun for a while with this, Jim. First off, thank you to WOBA for asking for partnership in bringing this program here today. It's very much appreciated. And of course, all of you for taking the time out of your busy schedules to be here and hear from the candidates. And then finally, the candidates. Running for public office, I've often said, is a calling. It has to be a calling because the demands of elected officials are ever increasing. The demands of the public seem to be, at times, very overly critical with very little room for whether you would call it mistakes or differences of opinions from elected officials. And sometimes things spiral into less than positive conversations about how you build communities. Fortunately, at the local level, I think there is great opportunity to have conversations and input and dialogue that creates great outcomes. And so I want to thank the elected officials for taking time from your personal lives, your professional lives, and from your families for making the opportunity for all of us to learn more about you and, of course, the electorate in several weeks. So thank you very much.
So the city of Olympia actually has four positions up for election this year. This evening, we have three of those four. First of all, we have incumbent Clark Gilman and Max Brown running for position number four. Unfortunately, Councilmember Gilman is fallen ill this evening and will not be joining us. So we want to hope that he has a speedy recovery since we still have a fair amount of campaign time left here. Then running for position number five is Alan Miller and Lisa Parshley. And then running for position number six, we have incumbent Janine Rowe and challenger Renata Rollins. And so I thought we'd start with just kind of some easy sort of things. And we'll start with a two-minute, up to two-minute candidate opening remarks. And we will start with Max and then move to Alan. So...
Are you the timekeeper?
Oh, yes, the timekeeper. Shelby is the timekeeper. So the green means 30 seconds for a two-minute or halfway through your time. And red means stop.
Stop.
Although it says no, it means stop.
We got it.
No. So Max, you have two minutes for opening comments.
Just to clarify before I start, do you want us to sit or stand?
Just sit.
Just sit. Okay.
Because serving on the city council requires that you sit a lot.
We could change that. So hi, I'm Max Brown. I'm running for position number four on the Olympia City Council. Olympia is the city that I was born and raised in. It's where I met my wife. We came back after college, got married, and started our family here. Tonight, I'll go home with my wife to our three kids, our daughter who just turned four this week, and our twin boys. We love this city and we're committed to this city. And one of the words that we hear often when we go out and talk to people in our community that they use to describe Olympia is potential. And to me, that means two things. One, we aren't satisfied with the way things are today. But two, that we have a belief that it can be better. And I'm running because I want to close the gap from where we are today to where we can be in the future. And to do that, I want to prioritize three things. Number one, revitalize our downtown. And I see that in two ways. Continue to see the investment in housing that we've seen over the last few years and start to make a bigger investment in making sure that our most vulnerable homeless population has access to the services that they need to be healthy and whole. Second, sustainable growth. As chair of the Planning Commission, I learned pretty close on that we expect 20,000 people to call Olympia home in the next 20 years. And I believe that if we plan and act today, we can keep Olympia unique, we can keep it livable, and we can keep it affordable, all while meeting our carbon footprint reduction goals over the next 20 years. But we need to start acting today. And finally, supported communities. I know a lot of people who call Olympia home who do not have time on a Tuesday night to speak with their city council members because they've got soccer practice or a PTA meeting or they're running late for their business. And I want to make sure that no matter who you are or how much time you have, your voice is reflected in the decisions that get made at a city council meeting. That just because you aren't the loudest person or have the most time, that doesn't mean that your voice should not be heard and reflected in the decisions that get made. So Olympia, again, this is the city that I love. It's the city that I'm hoping to represent and in all of you, I hope to represent here in the next few months. So again, Max Brown, thanks for being here. Position four for Olympia City Council.
Great, thank you. Up next, Alan.
I'm Alan Miller. And I am, first of all, want to thank WOBA and the Chamber for sponsoring this forum. I think this is the last one that's been scheduled, so maybe the last time to see all of us together. I'm a member of both WOBA and the Chamber, and so really appreciate that you setting forth this. I've been a servant leader, a community builder, and a collaborator in town since 1982. I came out of law school and worked for the Attorney General and have been a private practitioner with my own business just down the street here on Smith Landing for the last 10 years. I've raised three Olympia High School grads and just happy to have raised a family and a great community that I want to continue to build. One of the things that I think will be, has been my legacy the last 20 years is when I was chair of the Chamber of Commerce, we hired David Chafford. And it's hard to believe that 19 years later, David Chafford is still here, but I think it's just a legacy of showing that, of good judgment of hiring good people in good positions. I was elected to the school board twice and have been involved in raising the graduation rate. And we built the Olympia Regional Learning Academy, which is the most environmentally sustainable school building in the state of Washington. I also served two terms on the Planning Commission and was involved, was led the downtown housing task force, which is, we are finally seeing the fruits of our labors with buildings such as the 1234th and the Walker John Buildings that are downtown, increasing the amount of people downtown, which we need to have housing because we're going to have 5,000 more people in downtown over the next 20 years. Final community collaboration and leadership was leading the Metropolitan Parks District Measure just a couple of years ago, which passed. And so we now have LBA Woods in Kaiser Heights and other parks in the pipeline. And it looks like, and finally, when I was Rotary Club President, we built the West Bay Rotary Point Park. Please look at votealanmiller.com. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Alan. Up next, Lisa.
Hi, I'm Lisa Parshley, running for Olympia City Council. Oh, I guess seven, eight months ago, I threw my hat in the ring. And I've been asked for seven, eight months, why are you running? And what's amazing to me, this never gets old to say this, because every time I say it, I think of my grandfather and my dad. It's because I was raised to give back to whatever community you're in. And as my grandfather always said, never leave anyone behind when you do that. Bottom line. For 15 years, I have used that mandate from my family to work for my profession. I'm a veterinarian. I've worked at the national level for the American Veterinary Medical Association, interacting with the USDA, EPA, FDA, and Congress. The skills I learned there, I then brought to the Washington State Veterinary Medical Association when I moved here a little over seven years ago. I helped them mentor, I mentored them through the process of leaving behind parliamentary governance to strategic management governance, because I was trained to do that at the national level. And somewhere along the way, I guess I went out of the room for a minute, they elected me the president of Washington State Veterinary Medical Association. I served for two years as that. I just gave that gavel up last year. And I won't lie, last November made me very worried about the national scene. And I understood one more time what my father and grandfather were trying to tell me. You have to give back to your community, and all politics are local. I have two businesses in this town. I have over 40 employees at this time. I live here, my heart's here. Olympia is my town. It's time to give back to Olympia. We have some serious problems with this city, but we also have a lot of hope. The city council currently is working on several very important things. The Home Fund, public safety, and they have committed to improving the environment by joining the Global Covenant of Mayors, holding to the Paris Accord, and committing to becoming a sanctuary city.
Thank you.
I'm Olympia, I'm Lisa Parshley, running for Olympia City Council.
Up next, Janine.
Thank you, Mayor Ma. I'm Janine Rowe, and I have been serving on Olympia City Council for the past eight years. I am the senior member. I've had the privilege of working with 16 council members, another one here tonight, and three mayors. I have been raised in Olympia. I raised my daughters here. I attended Olympia High School, Lincoln, Washington. I served as a legislative aide in the Washington State Senate for approximately 25 years and for some really great leaders in our, in our state. And I also am a Realtor. So three years ago, I became a Realtor with Green Realty up here on the west side. And I have been, it's been very good for me to be serving on a different side of town. Instead of right in the core of the west side, it's been very, very eye-opening and good for me, serving as your council member. And also, I have, I'm currently the chair of the General Government Committee. I'm vice chair of the Transportation Benefit District. I'm chair of numerous boards and committees. And I just need to emphasize, I believe what David said earlier, how challenging it is to serve on council. No matter you vote one way, one group's happy with you. You vote another way, and the other, the group is not happy with you. So it really takes a balanced approach. And what I think I bring to council is a voice of common sense. I have built a lot of great relationships with people over the years. We need to have civility and respect in our community. And we have really been challenged in the last year with a lot of protesting, disrupting our meetings. And it's, it's been hard. We need to be civil with one another. And I think that communication and problem solving is key.
Thank you. Renata? She needs the microphone there. Thank you.
Hi there. Good evening. Good to be here. My name's Renata Rollins. I'm running for position six. And I want to be an amazing council member, representative, and community ambassador for Olympia. I, I'm running for council because I love this community. We definitely have our challenges, but I'm excited about where we can go when elected public servants lead with passion and initiative to make our town even better. I've worn a number of different hats in service to this community. Diverse professional experiences, including social work, journalism, team management, and public relations. And I'm currently self-employed through a contract with the state. I'm also on the Board of Nonprofit Partners in Prevention Education. I'm the vice chair there. And just a passionate community advocate who's founded numerous initiatives and groups to bridge diverse communities in Olympia. I've lived here since 2001, did not get to grow up in Olympia, but graduated from high school as valedictorian over in Spokane. Could have gone anywhere, but chose to come here to Olympia. I went to Evergreen and got a bachelor's degree. And chose to come here because I wanted to challenge myself. And we certainly do have our challenges. You know, addressing homelessness and the negative effects that are becoming more and more clear to everybody, one of, one of our challenges. Taking care of our downtown, wisely preparing the city that we love for the historic growth that we're, that we're anticipating. And that means housing inventory. It means transportation and infrastructure and economic development. And I want to bring my knowledge of diverse communities to council and approaches that work, experience in community and stakeholder outreach, and my passion and initiative to personally help solve these problems. My background in different leadership roles have prepared me for the hard work, critical thinking, and holistic approach required to sit on council. And this is a time of historic growth, and I look forward to our discussion of Olympia's future tonight. Thank you.
So the next question is for all the candidates. We will start with Renata, followed by Max. And that question is, what is your vision for West Olympia over the next 10 years? One minute to answer, go.
One minute, okay. So West Olympia, when I think of the challenges and the opportunities facing West Olympia, that is where a lot of our high-density corridors are. And so I think being good partners with the folks that are doing the development over there to make sure that we're following our comprehensive plan for, for dense corridors and for some dense nodes for residential. So the, in the Capitol Mall area specifically was one area the Planning Commission has identified. I think transportation is going to have to be, and just congestion and all of that is going to have to be on the forefront of how we're envisioning. And some of that is going to be partnering to get better public transit and extend, extended into later hours. So we're, so we're supporting the 24-hour workforce essentially that, that we're going to be seeing more and more as our community grows. I think, of course, parks, walkable neighborhoods so people can get to the places they need to get, and more bicycle infrastructure for real community.
Thank you. Max, your vision for West Olympia over the next 10 years?
Yeah, there is an, I actually agree with quite a bit that was just said. I think part of it's saying, the city of Olympia and the Planning Commission, some of the work that we've done is, say, Harrison Avenue, it's right on a main corridor for transit. Let's make sure that it's dense, that we have more housing in those areas. I think that that's a great opportunity for us to make sure that we're meeting our sustainability goals and getting more people into our community and not using land outside of city limits to house folks. I think also working with them all and saying, how can we partner as you are a big generator of revenue for our community? But how do we also talk about housing in those areas as we want to make sure that they're compact areas? And also, I think, you know, one of the things that I, I think some people are starting to realize this, the city of Olympia in the past has not necessarily been the most business-friendly environment to work in. We lost a giant revenue generator in the city when Toyota of Olympia, which is still Toyota of Olympia, decided to go to Tumwater. And we need to have a conversation to make sure that people want to invest in here and want to stay here. And I think that's a major component of it. I was a west-side kid growing up. I want to make sure the west side doesn't feel like they're the second-class city in Olympia.
Thank you. Alan, your vision for West Olympia?
Thank you. I see two areas of, of where we need to get growth and denser. First of all, a vision is to have a trail along West Bay Drive for biking and hiking. One of the reasons I decided to lead the effort for the Metropolitan Parks District was to have money to do what is called the Big W Trail, which would be a trail from the West Bay Marina down to Percival Landing and then up along the Port Peninsula and then up East Bay. So I think that's important for recreation and, and good health of us to have that trail. And I think that would also generate more housing and businesses. My, my vision is to have sort of a mini Reston Way, if you're familiar with Reston Way up in Tacoma, is to have restaurants and people living along the, the West Bay waterfront. Smith Landing is, was one of the first mixed, mixed-use buildings built in the city, and I think that it's, it's been a good, good model. As far as Harrison, we do need to get more dense along Harrison and more housing along there. Thanks.
Lisa, your vision for West Olympia?
Mine mirrors a lot of what the others have said. I think the corridor up Harrison, along Harrison, and around the mall is a perfect place to do high-density living. But with high-density living, it would be also very nice, because I'm an unashamed environmentalist, is to provide places for people to go get dinner, walk to get grocery stores, go to shops. Small businesses make up 65 to 68% of our economy nationwide, according to the Harvard-Wartton Business School. So if we can increase the number of small businesses along this high-density corridor so people can walk there, they can take a bus there, and we can have our high density, we can absorb some of the growth. So my vision for West Olympia is to protect the neighborhoods because they are a gem. They are what makes Olympia unique. And as we build our high-density corridor, make it such that the people from the neighborhoods, the people that are living in the multifamily units have somewhere to go for business.
Thank you. Janine, your vision for West Olympia?
Thank you. My vision for West Olympia is to have everyone in West Olympia feel like we are all one city. I know that working up here now, as I said earlier, there is a lot going on in West Olympia. And I am hoping further down the road, potentially, we could have a library up on the west side. The Ambassador Program, which I brought forward to downtown Olympia several years ago. When I met with some folks earlier in the year, the idea of maybe extending our Ambassador Program up to the west side to help deal with the homeless population, preserving more of our parks for the density that everyone's talked about. I know that there is land that has been purchased. It would be great to see that turned into parks, as well as the huge traffic issue. That will become a real necessity.
Okay. So as if my opening comments weren't fun enough, we're going to try something that should be really fun. The much-loved-by-audiences, much-dreaded-by-candidate lightning round and/or yes/no response. So for those of you here in the audience, you will have on your table, so you can play along as well, your very own grid so you can mark down candidates' responses. And also, I'd like to pass, take one of these and pass it on. Take one, pass it on.
Love waffles.
So you will note on your card, there on one side it says yes, and the other side says no. We are trying to provide you with yes/no questions, but we understand that city business sometimes is complicated, and yes/no may not work. So you can waffle on your answer. But the rule is you only get to use the waffle one time. We have 10 questions. And when you are done with your waffle...
You guys are back.
Just throw it out there. So again, 10 questions, lightning round. You are to respond yes or no. Everybody practice, are you at the West Olympia Business Association and Chamber of Commerce Candidates Forum? That's how you do it. Okay. So everybody understand the rules? I will read a question. You answer yes, no, or waffle. Audience can mark it down. We're recording this. Question number one. Have you used the new loo or public restroom bathroom at the Artesian Commons Park? Okay, very good. Everybody got that? Question number two. Do you consider a new courthouse in downtown Olympia economic development? Everybody marking this down? Very good. It's a little slower-paced lightning round, I think. Number three. Would a $15 minimum wage have a positive impact on Olympia's economy, specifically its local businesses? We got one waffle. Mmm. Pass it out there.
Complicated.
It's complicated. Toss her down, toss that new waffle. That way eliminates any possibility of waffling more than one time. Okay. Question number four. Does the city of Olympia engage in an excess amount of process? Got that? Question number five. Has the Artesian Commons Park come to represent in a single place the total failure of city government? Total failure? Total failure of city government? Question number six. Will sea level rise be a significant factor in your decision-making during your term in office? Question number seven. Should Olympia annex the remaining urban growth area on the west side over the next four years? One waffle. Got one waffle there? Okay. Question number eight. Should Olympia consider some form of citywide rent control or rent stabilization? Rent control or rent stabilization? Question number nine. Do you think cyclists should start paying a fee or a license tab-like fee to support Okay. The final question. Will you support the police department in its enforcement of all city ordinances and state laws that are currently on the books? All right. Was that fun?
That was fun.
That was fun. So who still has her waffle? Okay, well, you don't get to use them on the rest of the questions. Just wanted to let you know.
I got kids.
So now we'll go back to our regular programming. Everybody have that all recorded? Is that fun? We try this.
Every now and then.
And Craig, just remind me that because we recorded this, we're going to also try to publish your responses to the questions and have it online there.
November 8th?
Pardon?
November 8th.
So the next set of questions are individual questions for each of the candidates. We'll start with Janine, followed by Renata. And these are quotes taken from the, your, your statement in the 2017 General Election Voters pamphlet. And you have two minutes to respond. Thank you. And so Janine, you are up first. And Janine, in your voter pamphlet statement, you wrote, "The homeless population in our, in our downtown is an ongoing concern that needs wise leadership." The question is, what did you mean by wise leadership? Two minutes.
Ooh, that's a good one. Well, I think that we have seen a lot of extremism in the last year in regards to our homeless population and the direction that many groups want to go, including repealing our sit-lee ordinance, which I think is a very poor choice right now. Repealing the sit-lee, sit-lee is where we don't allow camping during, on the streets during the day, laying down. And we, that was a tough vote that we took six years ago. And so that, that is one example, is the sit-lee ordinance needs to stay intact. I think that we need a stronger police presence in our downtown community and need to give our police the authority to enforce our laws. At the same time, we need to have compassion, which takes wise leadership. We need to understand that we have a business community down there that is trying to thrive and that we can't, we cannot help every homeless person in the county. I, I really urge our colleagues in the, the region to come out and help us. You know, every center does not need to be into the downtown core. I would love to see Lacey and Tumwater kick in, and they could provide a warming shelter. We are taking the, the crux of our homeless population right now, and it is really, really hard on our downtown community. So I say wise leadership. We can't have, we can't have council members who have a very narrow view of helping our homeless community. We have, you have to have a balanced approach. And you have to look at the businesses, you have to look at our citizens, our shoppers, our, people need to feel comfortable going downtown.
Thank you.
And, thank you.
So Renata, in your voter pamphlet statement, you wrote, "I will push for an affordable, accessible Olympia and offer underhoused Olympians safer alternatives and better resources." What are better resources and who will provide them? Two minutes.
Okay. So some of the, I'm coming to this question having, having worked around homelessness in a number of different, wearing a number of different hats. One of them's a social worker, which was doing... One of them's a social worker, which was doing street outreach, getting to know the needs of individuals who are homeless, particularly with regards to what kind of housing works and what kind of mental health supports or substance abuse supports and recovery services may be needed. So, that's kind of the vein of the thinking as far as how to, how to make, how to make the situation better for individuals experiencing it. When it comes to how to, the effects that homelessness has on the greater community, so the business community downtown, residents downtown, new residents coming downtown, frankly, every neighborhood, West Olympia too. We need to be looking at long-term solutions and more immediate stop-gap solutions, in my opinion. It's a community conversation as to who does this, but I'm definitely in support of the home fund. And that's, that's a solution that I and other people in the field of social work have been advocating for, for years, based on the evidence of what works, what gets people off the streets, what helps people recover. So housing services, supportive housing, and also stop-gap in the meantime, recognizing that if we don't designate appropriate places for people to live who do live outside and who can't afford housing today, then the only options are inappropriate places. And that's what we're seeing today, is people camping in neighborhoods and ravines. And I think we need resource, we need resources and to designate a place that's more appropriate. And that's a community conversation.
Great. Thank you. So, next up, we'll have Max. And Max, in your voter's pamphlet statement, you wrote, "We deserve council members who are clear communicators, experienced with public, with city policy, work well with others, and embrace difficult conversations." How will you actually embrace difficult conversations? Two minutes.
Absolutely. I think part of it is saying, right now, if you really want to interact with city council members, Tuesday night is kind of considered your best bet. Show up, maybe you get three minutes, and there isn't even a dialogue. It's just three minutes, next, and at the end, maybe the council members have an opportunity to comment. The city has done things in the past I think we should continue to embrace and expand. Go out into the communities, have not just forums like this, but have council members sitting at tables, having conversations with people about specific issues. You know, I'm a, part of my job during my day is I work for the governor's office, and we deal with really difficult issues, whether it's the opioid epidemic that we're seeing across the state, or reducing homelessness or recidivism for criminals who are leaving prison systems and making sure they don't come back in, or increasing graduation rates. These are not easy things to solve, and oftentimes, they're very difficult conversations to have. But part of what we do is we facilitate conversations across agencies, and agency directors from all over the state, and members of the governor's policy team and budget staff. And I think we need to continue to implement things, you know, that kind of skillset within our city council to say, it's time for us to rethink how government interacts with its citizens and allow us for conversation. We should be going out and meeting with people, not just in City Hall, but at Capital High School, and over at Roosevelt, and in different areas and pockets of our community, and having different conversations and facilitating them in a way that is helpful. Making sure that we have skilled people who are, really know what they're doing so that we don't have out-of-control meetings, and that we can have conversations that are civil, that are productive. And the other component is, we need to move beyond often a lot of the talk and the plan to the actual implementation. So, we need to have these community conversations to lead the efforts and help us understand our priorities, and then we need to act as city council members.
Thank you. Up next is Alan, followed by Lisa. Alan, in your voter's pamphlet statement, you wrote, to paraphrase, "Local government is..." dot-dot-dot, about, or, "Local government is about..." dot-dot-dot, promoting family wage jobs and public safety programs. Alan has worked on these issues for decades and knows how to get things done. What things have you done specifically around family wage jobs and public safety programs? Two minutes.
Well, I've worked with the Chamber of Commerce and with the Economic Development Council to diversify our economy. We are primarily a state-government-run economy, but, you know, we have increased the, out at the airport, and in Lacey, and in Olympia, increased businesses by promoting them and by welcoming them into our, into our community. And so, with my chamber hat on, that's something that I have done. What was the other phrase you used besides the family wage jobs?
Public safety programs.
Public safety programs. Well, on the Planning Commission, we, we've worked with making sure that the, that the police and that the fire and through zoning were promoting public safety. One of the things that we need to do is to, one of the things that I promoted as a Planning Commissioner and as a Chamber President was to make sure that we had our walking and biking patrol, and that's one of the things that unfortunately got cut during the recession. But I, we have the opportunity for the Public Safety Initiative on the ballot in November, which I just voted for today, is to bring back the walking and biking patrol, because community policing, not only downtown, but, but community policing in the, in our neighborhoods is something that's, that's necessary. I remember the days when, you know, we knew the police that were helping us and seeing them as other public servants. So, those are the type of things I have done, and I would like to continue as a city council member.
Great. Thank you. Lisa, in your voter's pamphlet statement, you wrote, quote, "I will build a coalition of service providers and small businesses to address homelessness and its causes with real compassionate solutions." How is your vision really different than the current system, and who is missing from the current coalition?
Well, it's not that much different, but the difference is what you do with that conversation. And who are we missing? We're missing those that don't have a roof over their head. It's all well and good. I do medicine all the time, and one of the hardest things about medicine, and this does relate to homelessness, is convincing people to do things for themselves or their pets so that that person or that pet gets better. So, compliance, that's a big thing. If we don't bring those that have no roof over their head to the table to discuss this solution, this plan, we don't know if it's gonna work, if we're gonna actually keep them in the housing we provide, if they're gonna keep them in the land that we provide for the camping. It's, one size is not going to fit all. So the coalition I dream of bringing together, which I have done at the national and state level for the veterinary profession, should have everybody at the table, from small business to the neighborhoods, to the city government, to the homeless, because if we don't get everybody at the table, the plan will not work. There will be a piece that is missing, and one size is not gonna fit all.
Great. Thank you. So the next question is the same question for all the candidates, and we'll start with Lisa, followed by Janine. This question is, "Based on information provided by the city of Olympia, sales taxes received from zip code 98502 amounted to almost $2.6 million in 2016. This was 50% of the city's total sales tax collections in 2016." Question one, do you believe that 98502, which is essentially the west side of Olympia, gets 50% of city services? If yes, how do you come to this conclusion? If no, why is this appropriate?
So they, just, the $2.6 million from sales tax come from 98502. I'm just trying to make sure I understand the question. Should the west side get 50%?
Do you believe, so, so again, the west, west side of Olympia collected 50% of the city's total sales tax collections in 2016. Do you believe the west side gets 50% of city services? If yes, how do you come to this conclusion? If no, why is this appropriate?
That's a really good, excellent question. It's the kind of question that I would like to see us ask about our budget, quite frankly. Here's the problem with saying based on sales tax, because quite honestly, the west side also has some of the mall. It has a lot of the small businesses. So, I would say that I'm against doing 50% of that going towards the west side just straight up, because I'm not sure that the distribution is correct. But I'll have to be honest, I'm not, I'm not answering this well because it kind of threw me. But I would say no, I'm against that, because you have to distribute the wealth, the city has to do its business, and the services have to go throughout the city. And if you've got most of the income in small business where the sales tax are coming from in the west side, that's an unequal distribution.
Thank you. A little bit of time there since we used up some re-explaining the question here. So, Janine, again, same question. Do you believe the west side gets 50% of city services? If yes, how do you come to this conclusion? If no, why is this appropriate?
So, my answer is probably quite similar to Lisa's. I think that West Olympia obviously has the auto mall, the mall, it has a huge amount of business up here, so, but what's the population of the west side compared to the rest of the city? So I think that people, because they come and shop, and we have a sales tax at the mall, does that mean they live on the west side? No. They probably, they live everywhere in Olympia. So what I'm saying is, yes, the west side is our huge sales tax base for us, and we appreciate that. But in terms of 50% of the services, that's not how it works. We need to represent all citizens of Olympia, and there's always going to be an area that has a higher base of businesses that we need. And that would be like auto mall and Capitol Mall.
Great. Thank you. Renata, again, the question, do you believe that West Olympia gets 50% of city services? If yes, how do you come to this conclusion? If no, why is this appropriate?
Sure. It is a great question, and I have to say, I don't know that answer right now, but what I hear in the question is concerned that, that that's not the case, and that we can be doing more for West Olympia. And I just want to signal my openness to hearing more about what that would look like. I know that a lot of the, the businesses in West Olympia, because of the access to 101, are folks that are coming from out of Olympia, even out of the county. Folks come from Shelton, so it's a, it's a wonderful revenue base for the community, and I'm hearing that, that it sounds like we can do more, and I'm open to that. I really do think, when I think of the, the challenges on the west side, it's the traffic, the congestion, particularly at Black Lake, which is, which is that, that 101, that 101 access. So, let's look at what we can do better. I don't, it's not gonna be me or one person.
Thank you.
It's all of us. Thanks.
Max, do you believe that West Olympia gets 50% of city services? If yes, how do you come to this conclusion? If no, why is this appropriate?
No, I don't think the west side does get equal services. $2.6 million is less than 2% of the city's revenue. It's not, I mean, that, that's a, I think that's just not a very fair comparison to have that conversation. So I think there's, there's kind of three things to consider. One, we have a historic downtown that's a diamond in the rough, and right now, we're working on polishing it, so it's gonna get a little bit more money. I also think it's important to realize that $2.6 million is, is a drop in the bucket for the city's budget, so to compare it as apples and oranges. But I also think that we need to give more attention and time to the west, to the west side of Olympia. It's where my brother and sister-in-law, their two kids live, it's where my mother-in-law, father-in-law, my brother-in-law, sister-in-law, my parents still live. I care about West Olympia, and I think there's some amazing opportunity, and it will continue to be a major asset for us. And we also need to give some assets back. How do we continue to advance parks in West Olympia? How do we get neighborhoods that have mix of uses and can really generate great activities and recreation for our community members there?
Thank you. Alan, do you believe that West Olympia gets 50% of city services? If yes, how do you come to this conclusion? If no, why is this appropriate?
I doubt West Olympia gets 50% of the services, but we do need to remember that the operating budget for Olympia is $140 million, so the $2.6 million that we're talking about is, as Max just said, a drop in the bucket. I, you know, my view as a city council member, as an elected official on the school board, is that we're all in this together, and so, we don't need to have a, an equal distribution of, of our wealth, our revenue distributed everywhere in the city. We need to, you know, we need to be concerned about downtown and the homeless issue, we need to get the public safety patrol going downtown. I would like to see more of a police presence on, for community policing on the west side. I'd also like to see a library on the west side. So those are the things that we need to balance with the revenue that comes in from, from all citizens of Olympia. And, you know, the streets, the, and sidewalks, they all, they all need to be helped.
Thank you, Alan. So, the next question again goes to every candidate. We will start with Alan. The question is, "How has the policy on downtown homelessness shaped issues regarding downtown development? And how has the policy on building heights affected downtown residential development?" One minute to answer that question.
Well, I am pleased to see that, that we are building downtown, and that we are getting more dense, that we're building apartments, and I'd like to see more condos downtown. We need to get higher. We, we have built higher with the 1234th and the, some of the Walker John projects and the Billy Frank apartments. We need to do more of that with the 5,000 more people that are, that are going to be downtown over the next 20 years. One of the things I would look at would be creating zoning incentives so that if low, low-income housing is part of a project, then the builder can go up higher. And I think that that is something that, that has been successful in other cities. So I would look to that as a, as part of the solution to getting more housing in, of all levels in, throughout the city.
Great. Thank you. Lisa, "How has the policy on downtown homeless shaped issues regarding downtown development? And how has the policy on building heights affected downtown residential development?" One minute.
Policies on homelessness, it shaped it because there's a downtown perception that it's not safe, it's not good to be down there. Unfortunately, there's two problems downtown. There's the drug problem and the homelessness problem, and they do overlap. But the policies shaping that, I actually think some of the policies have been good. Developing the Low Barrier Shelter down on the First Christian Church has been excellent. The winter shelter last winter, I have businesses down there. That actually dropped the number of homeless in my parking lots in the morning, outside of my house when I walked. So in some ways, that's better, which, but it shows that we have a lot of work to do on the homelessness. As far as heights, we absolutely have to go up. We have to realize that we're gonna grow, we have to get these people in here. They expect 5,000 of those people will be downtown. You're not gonna do that without going up a few floors. It's just the bottom line.
Great. Thank you. Janine, "How has the policy on downtown homelessness shaped issues regarding downtown development? And how has the policy on building heights affected downtown resident, residential development?"
Well, at the risk of sounding a little repetitive here, I, I think that Olympia, the amount of homeless in our community has increased dramatically since I first started eight years ago, and in fact, it has increased pretty dramatically over the last eight, year, one year. And we are really struggling to keep our head above water in dealing with this, as well as supporting our downtown community. I do want to give kudos to our Economic Development Director, Renee Sunday, who is, who is no longer at Olympia, she just left. But we have a lot of good things happening in Olympia, a lot of development, and I think that the building heights was thoroughly discussed by our planning commissioners. We have had the comp plan and the shoreline master plan, and as a city, we have come up with some standards for our heights. And yes, we need to go up higher, and we have designated areas in Olympia that are meant just for that. And so, I look forward to more building in downtown.
Renata, "How has the policy on downtown homelessness shaped issues regarding downtown development? And how has the policy on building heights affected downtown residential development?"
Sure. So, I want to take this question first from just people that I know who do live downtown, and people who are, a lot of them are new to Olympia, you know, with, with 1234th going up, so, and, and honestly, a lot of folks that are moving here and living downtown really love it. I mean, I think to a lot of us, especially those of us who've been in Olympia for a long time and seen, like, the numbers of, of people that are homeless growing, and that discomfort that that causes to, to witness that and be around that, is really disturbing. But a lot of folks are coming from Seattle and are, are used to, to something on a different scale. Of course, we don't, we don't want to get there, and that's why it's important to have policy that keeps ahead of, of the problem. And so, having places where people can go during the day, at night, that are not necessarily just downtown. Downtown's a great place, but it's not the only place folks should be needing to hang out. And building heights, absolutely. I believe we've gotta go, we've gotta go dense, we've gotta go high, but I do think there's legitimate concerns about sea level rise.
Max, "How has the policy on downtown homelessness shaped issues regarding downtown development? And how has the policy on building heights affected downtown residential development?"
Yeah, I was trying to not sound like a broken record. Yeah, I'll try to not sound like a broken record. I think it's kind of a chicken and the egg thing. And when we talk about our downtown and how do we get more people down there, and yet we have homeless issues, it's, you know, I don't want to go and live downtown because I don't feel safe because of all the homeless folks, but we're not going to have a safer downtown until we have more people living there. So, what goes first? And I think part of it is, we as a community need to say, what are the incentives that we can drive to help developers actually do the development that we need to house people? And at the same time, what services do we provide for those most vulnerable to get them off the streets? So, we can try and do, you know, pull both levers at the same time. When it comes to, you know, how are the policies affecting our homeless folks downtown or homelessness policies driving development in downtown? It's hard to say because we're not really enforcing anything. So, we've got them on the books, but we're not doing anything about them. And I think for housing and height, I'm actually of the opinion that we're okay, which is probably going to come as a shock to some people. But when I talk with builders and developers in downtown, they say, it's not height that's the problem, it's impact fees that's the problem. We have the ability to go high. We don't need to change that, but we do need to have a conversation about impact fees.
Thank you. So, the next question will go to all the council, council members, all the candidates. We'll start with Max, followed by Alan. The question, a survey of chamber members overwhelmingly indicated that they believe public perceptions of downtown impacts the business climate throughout Thurston County. With almost 92% indicating yes, respondents clearly connect perceptions of downtown to the regional business climate. With this in mind, what is the role of the city council in improving business, the business climate downtown?
Yeah, I think it's a couple of things. One, we need to make sure that we have resources for those who are most vulnerable, because I think a big part of the perception of downtown is surrounding our homeless population. So, one, we need to make sure that those who are most vulnerable, because, let's just be honest, almost every time you go downtown, you can see somebody who's clearly in a situation where they need mental health care or they need addiction treatment, because it's not exactly, they're on the streets, they don't have access to resources, and they need them. I think the city can help facilitate that conversation, working with our regional partners, our nonprofit partners, to get them off the streets. And also, I think the other component is, we know that there are people in downtown who are bad actors, who are preying on those exact people who do not have the ability to take care of themselves. Our police need to be resourced and given the authority to do their jobs. So, I think it's a balanced approach. We can't have a heavy hand without a soft heart, but we need to start doing the right thing and start acting. I don't feel like there's a sense of urgency right now at the city, and we need one.
Thank you. Alan, what is the role of the city council in improving the business climate downtown?
I see two things. First is to take care of the homeless issue, and my vision is to have like a 911 system in place where if people going downtown or living downtown see someone that's vulnerable, that they can call 911, and a social worker would respond. Part of the, part of the public safety fund that's on the ballot will provide for this. And I've been on the Providence St. Peter Board that funded the new Providence Community Care Center, which is our triage center. The people could be brought to the triage center. If they have addiction problems, they can be helped in that way. If they have mental illness problems, they could be helped in that way. If they just need a job, they can be helped in that way. The second thing is to get more housing downtown, get the 5,000 more residents downtown as soon as possible, just so that we can have people buying at the retail and going to the restaurants and increasing that economic development. My vision is to have the new courthouse downtown.
Lisa, what is the role of the city council in improving the business climate downtown?
First is owning a problem before you can fix it. We have to own the homelessness as our problem and not wait for the region or other cities. This is our problem. It's our downtown. So, the city council has to own that problem. Then they need to figure out how are we going to deal with it. We're going to need to do things like the home fund. I'm 100% behind that. This is great. You'll get the 250 most at-risk with services off the streets. But we have about three to seven years before we see that housing. So, we're going to need to continue with things like a winter shelter, low-bearer housing. Let's get them places where they can go, camping sites where we can move them. And then, once we give them an alternative where they can go that's not on our streets, we can say, okay, now let's respect some of these things about the downtown. But we have to give them somewhere safe and clean with water and everything else. Now, the second thing the city needs to do is they need to realize we have two problems downtown.
Thank you. Janine, what is the role of the city council in improving the business climate downtown?
Gee, as the only city council member that is an active city council member, I will tell you, there is a sense of urgency, and we are working hard. And it is really difficult, again, to say that the city council needs to own it. We can't own it. It is up to the entire community to help us out. It is up to the county. It's up to the state. It's up to the federal government. It's up to our neighbors. It is not up to a little teeny-weeny Olympia City Council to handle this growing crisis in our nation. You can tell I'm getting really worked up, because we are trying. And putting up camps, I'll tell you, one thing that slowed us down is all the disruptions and protests that we had. We could have had so much more work done if we hadn't had to constantly deal with the protesting, dealing with shutting down our meetings and moving upstairs. It slowed us down. We have to work together as a community. We have to reach out to our neighbors.
Renata, so what is the role of the city council in improving business climate downtown?
Right. So, this is a lot of why I wanted to run for council, because I've been so personally invested in downtown the last few years and also have professional experience around what works in homeless services, mental health, and chemical dependency treatment. When it comes to improving the business climate downtown, I think a lot of folks are looking for a different place for homeless folks to be than just downtown. And I think long-term, a lot, most of us up here probably agree that investing in housing is the way to do that. It's actually the cheaper way to do it, rather than what we have right now of, you know, you call police, you call the fire department because somebody's passed out, you know, some shelter beds that may or may not be open. So, we can go about this in a cheaper and a smarter way. But this isn't going to be solved in one budget cycle, and I recognize that. I think everybody recognizes that. There's still room for more community leadership.
Thank you. So, the next question, we'll start with Alan, then go to Lisa. Again, this goes to all the candidates. Why is economic development and community wealth building important for the city? And what current economic development endeavor interests you?
Okay. Is that right?
Two minutes.
Okay. Well, economic development is very important, because that's where our tax revenue comes from, not only increasing property values, but also the sales tax in the retail and restaurants and other transactions, the auto mall that's going on. So, and my vision is to partner with, I can tell you, as an attorney, our courthouse never should have been built up on that hill. It's been a terrible facility, even dating back to 1982, when I was a rookie attorney up there. And from 1850 to 1970s, when we built that building up there, it was downtown. And so, the public knew exactly where to go, you know, which, and the employees could be downtown. The public would be coming downtown to court and to, you know, buy their license tabs and registering their vehicles and doing the things that we do at the courthouse. That would be, bring more and more, and I would hope that would also encourage people to live downtown, employees to live near the courthouse and the public. So, that is, I think, a very, very important economic development for downtown. Another thing is that it's nice to see, I've been on the YMCA board for 20 years and just announced yesterday that, you know, that the downtown Y, that we've been trying to patch together for years and years and just is too expensive to rehabilitate, we're going to, we're opening up the Plum Street Y there at Fifth Avenue Fitness. And so, these are the type of facilities that not only nonprofits, but the profit sector can be behind, and I think that would increase our economic development and increase our tax base and thereby help all of us living here in Olympia.
Great. Thank you. Lisa, why is economic development and community wealth building important for the city? And what current economic development endeavor interests you?
Why is it important? Because without money, nothing happens in this society, unfortunately. If we can have a very healthy small-business community in Olympia, we will have more funds to do things. We will develop more revenues of income for everybody. So, economic development in this city, absolutely. Even if you're one spectrum, side of the spectrum or the other in the political realm, you have to realize a healthy economic community means you have the power to do a lot of things, whether they be social good or environmental good. So, economic development, 100% behind it. What excites me is small business. I think we could become an incubator if we combine our efforts with Tom Water and Lacy and the county. We could become an incubator for small businesses. But it's obviously going to take cleaning up some of the areas that we have in our town, like we've been talking about, with the perception of downtown, so people want to move here. We already have people looking at our area for green energy. Green energy is one of the number-one growing small-business and large-business sectors in our country. We should be taking advantage of that. We should partner up with the port and use some of the land down near the airport. We should become the incubator for some of these small businesses, hands down. It'll feed our community college education courses, our high school, you know, green energy, green business. It is the fastest-growing thing. We shouldn't run for these sectors. We should be embracing them and bringing them to Olympia.
Thank you. Janine, why is economic development and community wealth building important for the city? And what economic development endeavor interests you?
Well, it's vitally important to the city of Olympia, and as I mentioned earlier, we were so pleased to develop the economic development director position that Renee Sunday had for approximately the last two years. And again, we have our development priorities that we've been working on, and it really has been great. Sometimes we get bogged down with all the negative that we hear about our community and downtown, but great things are happening, and I don't want you to lose sight of that. I serve on the PBIA, which is the Parking Business Improvement Area, the VCB, which is the Visitors and Convention Bureau, as well as the Washington Center Board, and I was there today. I am so strongly invested in our economic development and supporting our small businesses. The Washington Center is a huge economic base for us. They have the city remodeled extensively the exterior of the building, and I am pleased to say that they are in the green now. They have struggled for a few years with a lot of different changes going on, and the Washington Center is an example of a great economic development base for us. The other question was, what was the second half of it?
Why is community wealth building important for the city? And what economic development endeavor interests you?
The endeavor that interests me is that we have, for years and years and years, had only low-income housing in Olympia, and we now have the 123, 123 lofts or the apartments, and many more coming. And that's the exciting part, is to have some market-rate housing in our downtown community so we can get a mix of population, which will then support our economic base. People will shop, dine, enjoy our city, and there won't be just one population.
Renata, why is economic development and community wealth building important for the city? And what economic, current economic development endeavor interests you?
Great. Well, I think economic development and, economic development and wealth building is exciting to me, because it represents individuals and the community living up to our full potential, being able to pursue what we do well. In a lot of ways, it's as simple as that. I mean, of course, it's revenue and it's all that, but really, it's just about people living up to their potential and doing what they do well and being a community together and functioning like an ecosystem. I think it's, economic development is, it's just exciting, because it's like, it's ever-changing, and it's responding to the community's new needs and emerging needs. And that's just, it's always exciting for me to talk to people who, I like Michael Cade at the EDC, who just, he's so passionate and knowledgeable about it. So, it's, no question, it's important and it's exciting. What interests me specifically, I mean, generally, of course, the green economy, and that's one thing I appreciate, the EDC, when they're soliciting new businesses to bring here, they're paying close attention to what are the kinds of industries that would do well in a community like Olympia or Thurston County broadly. So, green development, which is like alternative transportation, they're looking at bringing in a bike-share program for Olympia, things like that. More urban farms, just that kind of local food infrastructure, that's going to help us be more resilient as the climate becomes more unpredictable here in other parts of the country. So, we're more self-sufficient here in Olympia. And also, housing is a big one, and that's going to be a big driver, just having more room for all the people that we're expecting and all kinds of different options. I'd love to look at how the city can support development in housing, opening up some of the different kinds of maybe non-traditional materials that people that want to build something in their backyard, maybe for their, for
Thank you.
An elder. Thank you.
So, Max, why is economic development and community wealth building important for the city? And what current economic development endeavor interests you?
How else are you going to pay for stuff? All these ideas that we've been talking about tonight, they cost money, whether it's housing homeless folks or making sure that we have adequately-resourced public safety officers. We need people who are generating revenue personally and for businesses to be successful in order for that to happen. Three things, and I'm going to bore you to death with one of them, I apologize. Three things I'm excited about. One, I don't know if you've all been aware, but there's a new program in the area called Think. It's something that I was a part of very early on at the state level, working to facilitate conversations to make sure that we're meeting SEC requirements, to make sure it was legal. But basically, it's saying, hey, you have a 401K that's invested in Coca-Cola and Exxon Mobil, maybe you don't like that. Is there a way for you to now say, hey, Olympia Coffee Roasters, or what's happening down at another business in downtown Olympia is trying to expand, maybe you can spend some of those dollars now, because you aren't necessarily a multimillionaire, but you could take some of your wealth and invest into those small businesses and see a return. So, getting more local dollars and your money into the local economy is a big one. Number two, I've got a lot of friends right now in the craft beer industry here in town. Wish they were in Olympia more often. I'm really thankful for White Wood Cider, opening up the Teeny Tiny Tap Room in downtown Olympia. Go there, it's great. And then, finally, it's the green economy, but I'm going to get specific, and I'm going to bore you, so just bear with me for a second. I'm a systems thinker. It kills my wife, so just bear with me. CLT, cross-laminated timber. Right now, I'm saying this because we have devastating wildfires across the western region, and one of the things that we know that we can do to help our environment is to actually start working on thinning of timber in these forests to help reduce how really bad these fires have become. Up to now, there was no way to use timber that wasn't viable for, you know, for timber use. Now, we have something. It's cross-laminated timber. It's a way that we can build buildings and be sustainable into the future. We should be working with the port to build it, have students at SPSCC be able to manufacture it, and use it in our buildings that are being built for housing in downtown Olympia. That's what I'm excited about as well.
Great. Thank you. So, now, we'll move to closing comments. You have one minute to wrap things up from your point of view. We have been traveling from, let's see, my left to my right, so we'll go in the opposite direction this time. We'll start with Renata and move down the road to Janine, followed by Lisa, then followed by Alan and Max. So, Renata, your one-minute closing comment, go.
Great. Well, I just want to say thanks for being here tonight on a rainy night. It was a really interesting conversation, and I'm just so excited about where Olympia can go, when I really want to bring my initiative, my passion for the city, my, my drive to just kind of get in and do. And I think that what I'm looking to fill, a role I'm looking to fill, is just being present to the challenges as they arrive. Like I alluded to earlier, we can't necessarily solve every problem in one budget cycle, but we can have leaders on city council who are present to the challenges, who are there with people, there with the businesses, if they're having a challenge with a situation in front of their door, the door of their business in the morning, there with the people that are, that are living outside. I'm inspired lately by the imagery of the mayor in San Juan, Puerto Rico, who is just like, no, there's no money to solve this problem, but I'm going to be out there with people along with the way and figuring out the solutions.
Thank you.
I thank you for your consideration and vote.
Janine, your one-minute close, please.
Well, thank you, and thank you to Woba. Again, I just want to acknowledge that it has been such a privilege to serve on the council for the last eight years, and I don't think any, well, some of you know how much work it is. It is a lot of work, but it's also a privilege, and I have been very honored to serve my citizens, the citizens of Olympia. I think we need optimism, experience, practical, common sense, and being committed to the next four years. So, that's what I bring, and I am eager to continue that voice. And there's many exciting things on the horizon for Olympia as well, that I'm ready to dig in and continue building relationships and representing people from all walks of life.
Great. Thank you. Up next, Lisa, followed by Alan.
This last not-quite-year has been tumultuous in this country. We've seen the federal government kind of go on trajectories that are scary. But what, at this moment, three weeks from election, I can tell you I have a great deal of hope. It's because of all the doorbelling, it's because of the people. I think this community has the answer. And as a city councillor and a city council, it's your job to bring out the best in your community, it's your job to bring out the brightest, and it's your job to take advantage of all the intellectuals. We have state employees here, we have lots of small business owners. I have a belief, just like everybody at those doors when I go to it, that if we get the right people in the right place, we can solve anything. And let me tell you, I am so proud of Olympia. The people I have met, the people I've interacted with have been my teachers. They are my source of hope for the future. And I know honestly, right here, better than I will ever know otherwise, that's true.
Alan, your one-minute close, please.
Thank you to Woba in the chamber for sponsoring this and for everybody to be here tonight. I would appreciate your vote. Go to votalanmiller.com for a complete list of the community service that I have presented and done for the community and in collaboration with all of you. I've worked with citizens to create the North Capitol Campus Heritage Park, which used to be, for those of you who were in town back in the 80s and 90s, there was a huge railroad yard back right down below the Temple of Justice. And so in collaboration with the railroad, with the county, with the state, with the city, with private philanthropy, we have created what is our National Mall, which was actually the vision of Wilder and White and the Olmsted Brothers. We need to, we need to continue to work on that. I'd like to see a Squawson Island Tribal Museum down there, I'd like to see a carousel down there, which is part, part of what should be our National Mall. You know, the first, first, when I came to, in town in 1982, Oscar Sewell asked me to work on the Washington Center. Thank you, vote Alan Miller.
Max, your one-minute close, please.
Thanks. So tonight, my wife and I are going to go home, and our twin boys will probably be asleep, our daughter will probably not. But every night I go home and every morning I wake up, I know why I'm running for city council. I have a sense of urgency every day, and I really believe in this community. I, this is part of my challenges. I, I look at our city council right now and some of our members, I don't see a compelling vision, and I don't see a sense of urgency for the real challenges that we face as a community. And that's why I'm running. I don't want to wait 30 years to finally realize the potential of this community, because every day I go home and the potential of my community is at my doorstep. And I'm doing this for them, I'm doing this for all the families in this community who know how great it can be, and I'm not willing to wait 30 years. We need to reach our potential today, and I hope to hit the ground running for you all this November. Thank you.
Thank you. So a round of applause for our candidates here. Great job. So ballots, I believe, are arriving in your mailboxes.
Today.
Today. So please remember to vote, or this will have been a really silly thing to do. So, again, remember to vote, and thank you again. Good night.
Thank you. That was a more fun day.